And welcome everybody to our James study and we're on session six. Lovely to have you here on this afternoon. For those of you at home, nice and warm, it's rather blustery and wet in Canock today. But we're here to study God's words. We're here to study what we can learn from the book of James. So before we start, let's take a moment in prayer. Father God, we thank you that we're free to study your word, that we're free to meet together and to learn from the scriptures. Father, open our hearts and open our minds to the letter of James tonight as we learn more about our faith in action. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. So today we're going to start by looking at part of James, chapter four, and it's verses three to fourteen. So James, chapter four, verses three to fourteen. "You ask and do not receive, because you ask wrongly, in order to spend what you get on your pleasures; adulterous. Do you not know that friendship with the world is enmity with God? Therefore whoever wishes to be a friend of the world must become an enemy of God. Or do you suppose that it is for nothing that the scripture says? God yearns jealously for the spirit that he has made to dwell in us. But he gives all the more grace, therefore it says: 'God opposes the proud but gives grace to the humble.' Submit yourselves therefore to God; resist the devil, and he will flee from you; draw near to God, and he will draw near to you. Cleanse your hands, you sinners, and purify your hearts, you double-minded; lament and mourn and weep. Let your laughter be turned into mourning, and your joy into dejection. Humble yourselves before the Lord, and he will exalt you. Do not speak evil against one another, brothers and sisters. Whoever speaks evil against another or judges another speaks evil against the law and judges the law. But if you judge the law, you are not a doer of the law but a judge. There is one law-giver and judge who is able to save and destroy. So who then are you to judge your neighbour? Come now, you who say: 'Today or tomorrow we will go to such and such a town and spend a year there doing business and making money. Yet you do not even know what tomorrow will bring. What is your life? For you are a mist that appears for a little while and then vanishes.' This is the word of the Lord. Thanks, sweet God. And now welcome George to lead us in our study this afternoon.
I think the top of my head is cut off here, Marie. Could you do something about that? I mean, it's just a bit of an improvement, you know, but... Oh, it's better, yeah. Now they can see I've got no hair. Well, we're certainly making our way through the letter of James, aren't we? This is the penultimate study. Next week we'll be looking at patience. Maybe we should have done that at the very beginning. But anyway, that's the, and that will be the final study on James. But today we're going to look at a subject which I hope we will find helpful but challenging as well, and that's being true to ourselves. And the reading, of course, Marie has just given to us. And in verse five of that reading, we have these words, "God yearns jealously for the spirit that he has made to dwell in us." In other words, God is zealous that the spirit that he has made to dwell in us should become active and purposeful in our lives. We all know that parents, for instance, want nothing but the best for their children. They want the best life possible. You have probably heard it said, as I have, "I want my child to have the things and opportunities I never had." So says James, "God yearns jealously for the spirit he has made to dwell in us." In other words, that we should have the best life possible and true to ourselves. In other words, becoming the kind of person God wants us to be, people who are true to God and his will for their lives. You and I know only too well that if we're going to be true to ourselves, we need to acknowledge who we are in God's plan for our lives, and we need to find our place in his purposes for us. But when you talk about such things to some Christians today, immediately we find ourselves in a great guilt trip. Rather than God moulding us into his will, so often it is the world that does the moulding. And of course, that is not limited to this modern day and age. Paul in Romans, chapter twelve and verse two acknowledges this very truth, and he puts it like this, "Do not be conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your minds, so that you may discern what is the will of God." So it's often because of the pressures that we all feel around us, we are modelled after what the world is doing rather than seeking what God wants to do in our lives. I know that stress, and I guess you do as well. So in our reading that Marie brought to us, that reading is all about living faithfully for God and finding our true self in his eternal purposes for us. The scriptures, you know, has a very, very, very high opinion of people. In Psalm 139, we have the words, "I praise you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made." And Paul has a lot to say about this in his letter to the Colossians where he says, "Look, I want you to lead lives worthy of the Lord, fully pleasing." "All things," says Paul, "have been created through him and for him." So when we think about being true to self, it really means being true to the kind of person that God wants us to be, having made us in his image, becoming that person God wants me to be. And in this section of his letter, James pinpoint's issues that draw us away from God's purposes, leading to a world-centred life rather than a God-centred life. And I have put my own interpretation on this, which I hope you will find helpful as we look at these distractions in various ways. I've tried to put them under the same letter so that it's perhaps a little easier for everyone to follow and maybe for everyone to understand. The first is models. You say to yourself, whatever does he mean about models? Does he mean making a model aircraft or making a model car? No, it's not quite like that, is it? In verse four, we have these words, "Whoever wishes to be a friend of the world is enmity with God." Whoever wishes to be a friend of the world is enmity with God. Right from our youth, we have all, I think, elevated people as those we would wish to emulate. My eldest daughter Margaret, who is now a head teacher down in Kent, at one time in her life, there were pictures everywhere in her bedroom of Barry Manilow. And what she thought about Barry Manilow, well, it was absolutely amazing. He was her role model. And on another occasion, being Margaret, she thought she would like to marry Prince Charles. And I said, "Don't you dare do anything like that. I couldn't live up to that." But you know, we smile about this, but we have all experienced role models in our lives, people we admire, people we look up to. And there are times when we are disappointed or disillusioned by what we see and what we hear about them, especially as everything seems to be laid bare in this day and age by the mass media. Someone has said, "If you want to sell newspapers, all you have to do is get a good story, and the more spicy and juicy it is about any celebrity will sell your papers." The promise to, or the pressure rather, to model our lives on worldly standards is great. We all know that pressure. The advertisers target their products for comfort, for status, recognition, and self-enjoyment, dressing them all up in such a way as to get people to pursue and acquire them. Products become must-have items, designer labels, the state-of-the-art, up-to-date gadgets. Yesterday's luxuries have become today's necessities. And when I was a boy growing up in the north of Ireland, it used to be called modelling your life on the Joneses. Now think about it all today, ladies. You can lose all those wrinkles if you buy the right kind of cream. And the bigger the label, garner, whatever the case may be, the more attractive it would seem to be. Or gentlemen, if you use the right deodorant, you'll have a whole stream of women following you all around the place. And if you believe that, you'll believe anything. One Christmas, I was bought an aftershave and it was called pagan man. And I thought to myself, "What are they trying to say?" But there we are. Well, you know, if you buy a certain gadget, it'll clean the floor for you. You don't need to worry about it. It's all there. And the greater the name, the greater the maker, whatever the case may be, more famous and more well-known. So it's pushed at us from every way. And we are channeled into modelling our lives in a lifestyle that is far from, I think, what our Lord would really want for us. John in his letter, chapter one, John, chapter two, puts it like this, "Do not love the world or the things in the world. The love of the Father is not in them who love the world; for all that is in the world..." And this is how he puts it, and I think very challengingly, "The desire of the flesh, the desire of the eyes, the pride in riches comes not from the Father but from the world." Now you can see why I have that heading, models. Because people say again and again, you know, there's that advert on the telly that says, "You're worth it." "I have a right to enjoy and have the same things as others." And of course, as James says, and he's right, trying to achieve these personal goals and desires leads to a breakdown in personal relationships, quarrels, divisions, follow as sure as night follows day. He puts it in the very beginning of the chapter, which we didn't read, verse one, "These conflicts and disputes among you, where do they come from? Do they not come from your craving that is at war within you?" And although we may look at modelling our lives on what the world is presenting and what the world is doing and what people are like, in the tradition of the Christian church, we also have a modelling problem. Right back in the earlier days of my ministry, God gave a tremendous blessing to a church in Toronto, Canada. And some of you may have heard about that. And people from this country went out to Toronto to experience that blessing for themselves. But the mistake they made was when they came back to this country, they tried to ape what had happened in Toronto. And it didn't work, because what God did there wasn't necessarily what he wanted to do here. And some time ago in my ministry, I went to York to David Watson's church at St Michael, La Belfry. And lots and lots of people from different parts of the Anglican Church were going there to see what God was doing through David Watson and how his work was being blessed. And I certainly got great blessing from that. But the mistake a lot of people made was they tried to take what they found there back into their situation, and it didn't work. Or again, God blessed the people of South Africa. And again, I had a rector whom I worked with, and he went to South Africa, and he came back full of what he had discovered there, and he tried to bring that into a parish in Northern Ireland, and it didn't work. You see, for all of us, we can't model our lives on the world or on what other Christians are doing or have experienced, however great that may be. We have to find God's unique way for ourselves. So we turn from models to motives. In verse three, "You want, you covet something and cannot obtain it; you ask and do not receive, because you ask wrongly, in order to spend what you get on your own pleasures." What is the motivation within? What's the motive in my heart for what I'm doing for the kingdom of God? Is what I'm doing for personal benefit or for self-indulgence or selfish ambition? In my experience of church life, over the years I've met people who have held high office. But one could not help but wonder whether holding that office was for the glory of God or for the glory of themselves and their position. Or says James, "A restless spirit of discontent will lead to compromise and self-deception." Because as we all know, as a person thinks in their heart, that's the kind of person they are. And Paul puts his finger on it in Philippians four, verse eight, when he says, "Whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is just, whatever is pure, whatever is pleasing and commendable, if there be any excellence, and if there is anything worthy of praise, think about these things." In our day and our age, covetousness is to the fore, an unreasonable desire to acquire what we don't have. Jealousy and greed manifest themselves in so many different ways. What comes out reflects what is inside, because by their fruit you will know them. And so I asked myself, and I joined you, I joined with you, and I asked you as well, you know, "What are the motives that drive me in my Christian walk? Is it for myself? Or is it for the glory of God?" Then the third thing that I think James pinpoint's that takes us away in the wrong direction is what I've called mannerisms. Verse seven, "Cleanse your hands, you sinners, and purify your hearts, you double-minded." For all of us, you and I alike, our environment, where we grew up, the influences that have surrounded us, often moulds our lives more than sometimes we realise. We develop habits. We develop ways of doing things. We copy behaviour towards others. You see, I grew, growing up in the north of Ireland, I was caught up in the middle of the great tension between Protestants and Roman Catholics. And when you were in the Protestant side of the divide, I can't talk about the Catholic side because I don't know very much about that, but when you're in the Protestant side of the divide, you are doctrinated. And you grew up with all that kind of thought patterns and behaviours. And consequently, you know, at one time, when I was a boy, I had, I'd never met a Catholic. And I think maybe I might have been one of those boys that thought that perhaps there were people with two heads, for all I knew. But that indoctrination was there, and it came out in mannerisms as one related to people who were different in thought or theology or political ways than oneself. The other thing is that when it comes to mannerisms, it's so easy to be hypocritical, so easy to live and act, so easily to talk one way and live another. Someone has put it like this, "What you are speaks so strongly, I can't hear what you say." Our Lord had words of condemnation for the scribes and particularly for the Pharisees. He denounced their hypocrisy. He denounced their painting of their faces to show that they had fasted in case someone didn't realise they had, always looking to get the best seats at a feast, making a shew of what they gave for the upkeep of the temple. That wasn't our Lord's way, mannerisms that were not and were contrary to his will and his purpose. And then finally, in these ways that so often take us away from being really what we should be and being true to ourselves is what I've called methods. In verse thirteen, it says, "Come now, you who say: 'Today or tomorrow we will go to such and such a town and spend a year there doing business and making money.'" In verse seventeen, he says, "Anyone then who knows the right thing to do and fails to do it commits a sin." The implications of what he's saying is that the plans of the traders and the merchants and the rich people and what they were doing in their policies was leaving God out of the reckoning. They didn't know what tomorrow was going to bring any more than we do, and yet they were making their plans as if tomorrow was all to do with them. And there is a real, real sense here in which James is saying demonstrate honesty and integrity in all our methods or in all our doings. Years ago, when I worked in the north of Ireland, and as I was thinking about this and all about James and his letter, two instances came to my mind. The first one was a Christian businessman who professed much, who was, if you like, a pillar of the local community, an upright man who had a really good standing within the fellowship of the church that he attended. He owned a garage. And during the course of a conversation that I had with him after I had left my car in for a MOT, we were talking, and I don't know how it all came about, but what came out of the conversation was that quite often he would put an apprentice to work on a car. But when the bill came, he charged the full amount for a professional mechanic. So I said to him, "That can't be right." And he said to me these words, which stayed with me ever since, "That's business." Well, you can argue around it, but it wasn't, it wasn't costing him as much for an apprentice to do the work as it would have a professional mechanic. And yet he was still putting the full bill in for the work. Well, was that, that's a method. Was it right? Was it wrong? For me, I thought, well, there's a, there's a grey line here, but it's dodgy business. And that, but that was one of the things that came out of our conversation. Another man that I met was a farmer. And what he did was when he was bagging up his potatoes, he put all the smaller potatoes at the bottom, and then he put the larger potatoes, the better-looking potatoes, on the top of the bag. And I remember we were talking and I said, I said, "That can't be right. If I buy your bag of potatoes, I think I'm getting this bag full of these wonderful potatoes. But when I get right down, I've got an inferior product." I've got an inferior product." Oh, he says, "Everybody does it and that's business." Now, those are two very, very simple. But if you think about the business world in a broader sense today, that can be magnified a thousand times. And therefore, in our dealings, in our methods, the methods that we use, are they being true to what God wants us to be? Or is it motivated by what we can get from it? You see, as James says, if we are to succeed in the Christian life, we must draw near to God. Verse 8. If you draw near to God, He will draw near to you. And as someone said to me, "If you feel that God is far removed, who do you think moved?" Indeed. So there are many pressures that come to us one way or another in life, pressures that are there to mould us in the image of people or in the image of society or the kind of world in which we live. And there are times that we go with it because, as my friends in business world says, "Everybody's doing it and that's business." But everybody isn't doing it and it's very, very important that we do a bit of work on these pressures that tend to mould us into something other than what God has in His wonderful plan for our lives. So James says, "What is the solution? Where do we turn from here?" And in verse 7, he says, "Submit yourselves to God." That's the answer. In verse 12, it says, "There is one lawgiver and judge who is able to save and destroy." So submitting ourselves to God means that we should live in the light of God's commandments. As a Christian, my life is to be lived under the lordship of Christ. And the ground rules for Christian living are to be found clearly in the scriptures. The Christian following the teaching of our Lord finds the true meaning and purpose of life. And I know that there are times when we look at our scriptures and we look at the teaching of our Lord and we have to begin to really, really think and work it out, but most of the teaching is straightforward. You shouldn't steal. You shouldn't murder. You shouldn't commit adultery. I mean, these things, you shouldn't commit. There are straightforward things that challenge the Christian community. And if we say, "Well, it doesn't matter if I steal from time to time" and remembering our Lord's words that quite often a person who thinks can commit murder rather than the actual act itself, that this is all right or whatever the case may be, then we err and we stray and as the prayer book says, like lost sheep. If we're going to submit ourselves to God, we must live and seek to live in the light of God's commandments because that is His roadmap for life. And then in verse 15, James says, "Instead you ought to say, 'If the Lord wishes, you will live to do this or that.'" So just as submitting ourselves to God means living in the light of His commandments, it also means living in the light of God's will for our lives. We are called to live near to our Lord and produce in our lives the fruit of the Spirit. This is God's will for our lives. Galatians 5:22. "The fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, generosity, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. And those who belong to Christ Jesus have crucified the flesh with its passions and desires." That's God's will for your life. There are people who will say, "Well, I don't know whether it's God's will that I should go overseas as a missionary or if I should do this." And I know those are complex issues and that people down through the years have tried to work out for themselves. But when it comes to essential Christian living, there is no question. There is no searching. This is what God's will is for us and there's no excuse for ignoring these things. We must put on the mantle of the Spirit in love and joy and peace and patience, kindness, generosity, faithfulness, goodness, and self-control. And if we did, and if I did, my, what a transformation that would make. And then submitting ourselves to God finally. In verse 12, he says, "There is one lawgiver and judge." Submitting ourselves to God means that we should live in the light of coming judgment. It's something, again, that people don't like to talk about it. And I know the church in ages past, probably and certainly in times of extreme theology had a very, very harrowing understanding of hell and that kind of thing. But you see, if there is no judgment, then there's no justice and we live in a world that is totally unjust. Think about it. If there is no judgment, then you can live whatever way you like and you can do whatever you like and you can hurt as many people as you like and you can be abusive as much as you like and you can trample over people as much as you like because what does it matter? Because at the end of the day, you're going to die and that's it. But Sunday by Sunday, when we meet together to worship, we say that we believe He will come to judge the living and the dead. There is a judgment, not just for those who reject Christ, but there is a judgment for God's people. And earlier on in our studies, remember the Matthew passage where our Lord said, "I was hungry and you gave me food and I was imprisoned and you visited me and the righteous said, 'When did we see you do this?' And as much as you have done it unto the least of these, my brethren, you have done it unto me.'" The basis of judgment is how we live our lives today. And although it's not a very, very, very acceptable type of preaching, I know, but and it's not what people want to hear and people want to stop their ears, but the fact is, we will be judged for our actions. We are responsible for our actions. And if we submit ourselves to the will of God, then we will give ourselves to His commandments. We will give ourselves to His will and we will acknowledge our responsibility and the stewardship that He's given to us for the bounty that is ours. This morning in our sermon at eight o'clock, I was saying to the congregation then and indeed out at Hattletown, it was this, "Look, if you were to die tomorrow, all that you have today would go to somebody else because all that you have is only lent to you for this time, this life. It's only lent. And there's a big billboard up in Birmingham for an insurance company and it said, 'If you were to die today, what would you be worth tomorrow?'" And I said to Vicky, "I'd be past caring." "What would you be worth tomorrow?" It wouldn't matter because all that you have will go to somebody else. I remember when I was working in a place called Achadui, not a good name, in the north of Ireland, there was this man who used to go out into the forest and he would be picking up twigs for his fire. And everybody thought, "Poor man." And people would go and would leave him a meal on his doorstep. And but when he died, and all of these things used to be published in the paper, I don't know what happens over here, when he died, his estate was worth thousands and thousands of pounds. You see, and I'll tell you now, his relatives, who were the heirs to that, they weren't gathering twigs. They made loose with their inheritance and they enjoyed it. And that poor man, he gave that impression. You know, this is the way that... Listen to the words of Revelation as the words that we say again and again at a funeral service. "Happy are the dead who die in the faith of Christ." "Henceforth," says the Spirit, "for they rest from their labours and they take with them the record of their deeds." You and I won't take with us our house or our possessions or our bank balance, but we will take with us the record of our deeds. And if as Christians we take this really seriously and we take it really to heart, then you can see what James is saying. If you submit yourselves to God, then the many pressures and the problems and these things that would mould and shape us into what the world would have us be will become less effective in so doing in our lives. May God grant that this study this evening will help us to understand a bit more of what it is and how it is that we can discover and that we ourselves and we can be true to ourselves in the sense of being the kind of person God wants us to be.
Thank you, George. There's quite a lot of challenge in that passage today. And we live in a world where we are bombarded by advertisement, billboards, paper, the internet. We're surrounded by it. One of our questions to reflect on is, what are some of the ways the media appeals to covetousness? And George has said, you know, they almost feed into our insecurities to make us better, more beautiful, stronger, more attractive. And the media's very clever because it has its target audiences. It has certain ways of attracting particular groups. And it's a particular thing if you are browsing what the internet picks up on. Having recently bought things for my house, you get the little adverts down the side, a constant reminder of, "Have you bought this yet? Have you bought that yet? There's a discount on, especially for you." And it's a case of upgrade. To be the best is to have the best. How often does my phone company ring me and say, "The next Galaxy Android is coming out next week. Do you want one?" And I really disappoint them when I say, "No, I don't. I just want a phone that rings and does messages and simple things and not make the tea for me, as they sometimes seem to promise." But it's a constant. What's here today will be old-fashioned in two months' time. You need to have the best to take the better picture, to have that better level of data. And we're told in Exodus and also in Deuteronomy, in the Ten Commandments, not to covet, not to covet the things that our neighbour has because we don't have them, not to compete to be better. The media appeals to our vanity and our insecurity and we need to fight against it. We're told not to covet and we know that from Galatians, this is not a fruit of the Spirit. And I feel sorry for folks who regularly do, buy, upgrade, upgrade because it leads to debt. And so much debt is because people want to have the next big thing. What are some of yesterday's luxuries that have become today's necessities? So many. We were talking a few weeks ago about central heating. I can remember as a little girl whereby having the heater on in the house throughout the whole house was in fact a luxury. You reserved it where people came to visit. We used to heat one room. That was the necessity. And I do sometimes despair when I go out to visit people and I arrive at their house with my numerous layers on and they're in short sleeves and shorts and it's winter. It's become a necessity. People complaining on the radio about central heating going up, I don't see why I should have to put a jumper on. It's a basic right. And if you think about things such as mobile phones, computers, even the television, those used to be luxuries. I went past a house the other night and the screen filled what I would call the chimney breast area. It was like a great big cinematic thing. I thought mine was big until I saw that. And necessities such as a phone. Again, most of you here can remember the day when you wanted to make a phone call, you went to the public phone box down the road. You didn't take out your phone. And I've worked with young people and the use of their phone has become like an addiction. For them, it is the necessity of their life. You know, in teaching, you were at liberty to confiscate temporarily a student's phone and you could see withdrawal. You could see states of agitation because they were separated. It's quite an addictive behaviour. And then what is the practical outworking of honesty and integrity? Vicky and I have our great saying is, "Are you like a stick of Blackpool rock? Wherever you snap that rock, we see Blackpool written through it." Wherever people find us, do we show the integrity of our faith? Are we honest with our faith? I often say, "Do people get what they see?" Little things that we do show our honesty and our integrity. How many of you in the good old days when we used money in the supermarket might have paid with a £10 note but they gave you change as if you'd paid with a £20 note? And you ever stood and gone, "Actually, you've given me too much change"? Or those of us who've worked with lots and lots of office stationery and you suddenly think, "I need some new envelopes for home. I'll just take a few." That's little things but not showing our honesty or our integrity. And part of that means we have to admit when we've got it wrong. And when George was talking about... And when George was talking about role models, I thought, "How are we role models to others? How do we model our faith in action? And what are our motivations? What would our lives look like if we modeled ourselves on Jesus? That classic friendship band from the nineteen nineties, WWJD, what would Jesus do? But if we model ourselves on Jesus, we become more like him and therefore act with greater integrity and honesty. And then what about this habit that we seem to have lost by saying in our conversations, "God willing"? It was somewhat ironic, I hadn't looked at the study today and I said to the folks at Hatterton, "God willing, die holt and I will be with you on the twenty-seventh." And I suppose for independent people, that can be a strange thing to say, isn't it? But it is part of our submission to God. We are doing God's will. But also, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. As James tells us, we don't know what tomorrow will bring. What will God's will be for us? So why do we stop using that phrase, "God willing"? Is it because of an embarrassment? Or is it because it's my will and not God's will that will enable this to happen? By saying "God willing," it's, "If God wills it, to be so." And certainly my journey into ministry, I've always said, "If God wills it, then it's right." So maybe it's a practice we ought to reinstate. "God willing, we will meet again here next week because we don't know what the week will hold." So some very challenging thoughts for all of us. And I'm sure many of you will have different ways to contribute to those questions at the back of the sheet, some which will be very personal to yourselves. So thank you, George, for another week of challenge. Shall we pray together? Father God, thank you for your word to us tonight. If you've challenged us, give us the will and strength, your will and your strength, to rise to those challenges. Let us discern your will in all that we do. Teach us to act with honesty and integrity at all times, bearing witness to you and to Jesus. Make our motives pure where we do things to build the kingdom up and bring your kingdom closer into the lives of the people we work with. Teach us to be honest stewards. Father, we pray that in studying your word, this will help us to become more like your Son Jesus. Help us to set aside the distractions and to read our Bibles and to focus on the simple things in life, the things that you provide to help us and sustain us. We ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
For those of you at home watching this, thank you for joining us and we hope to see you next week. Goodbye.